Dan and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Love you if you're with Lisa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
Thank you. Please call her off.
Had to bring my.
Nope.
Aldag.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Popoff. Summer Pharaoh. Tao.
Yes.
Kyo.
Here.
And Shai.
Yeah, so Dan is absent with with notice.
Joey knows it's gonna be a little late.
Okay, I M C is approval of the meeting minutes. From council meeting on May 12th and our budget work session on May 13th. You wanted to add something here.
Correct, yeah, so um. We noticed that we hadn't asked council to approve the chambers Friday night music series. So if we can add that to the consent agenda.
We're on minute minutes.
Oh, sorry, minutes, yeah, yeah. Sorry, 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 sorry. Yeah, so so Joe had reached out and asked. About some items that we had at one point asked to be removed from the proposed items for future meetings. And I took a look and there were two that were removed, one of which was the debate team presentations. Did remove from the agenda, forgot to remove it from minutes.
Okay. Okay, so we want to reflect that should be removed then?
Correct. Yep.
I move to approve the minutes with that reflection.
Okay, motion by Aldag, is there a second please?
All second.
Any other comments? I don't know, anything else on events?
Awesome.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's call the vote to approve the minutes.
Tao.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes, motion carries, the minutes are approved, we have no prearranged participation this evening. So we're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak tonight under non-arranged? Yes, please, welcome. Just come on up to the podium and you include your name and address so we can get it for the record, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Minapate and I live in Canton, but I have a business at Dexter Marathon.
Okay.
Okay. My name's Melissa Mosher and I live in Dexter and help Mina the store.
So three weeks before we started the food truck business and village permit us for our only one day, eleven to seven. And we were the customer, they signed they want more than a one days. So at least one fifty-five to one sixty customers claim hour and they say they wants to do more than one day.
We would like to do more than one day, we've only got approved for one day for certain amount of hours, so we were wondering if you guys could revisit the twenty sixteen policy about food trucks and what's the mobile vending policy, but it's it's increase our business as well as I believe downtown businesses.
Okay.
And it's already on the Sun Time News and a good review for the food over there.
So it's been a while since I read that ordinance, so it it only allows them one day.
So so it's it's. It requires that any food truck be approved as part of a special event. It doesn't necessarily define what a special event is. But i- initially. Mina came in and asked for seven days for an extended period of time. And that didn't sound like a special event. And so we worked with Mina to to have a once a week event, which we have permitted other businesses to to do like erratic.
Okay.
But allowing the food truck as part of as something bigger than just a food truck, you know, music, special sales. That that sort of thing.
Okay, so so to permit more than one day would require changing our ordinance.
I I I I think if council wanted to move towards permitting.
More frequently.
More frequently or less strict or or more loose.
Yeah.
Rules around it, I think it would it would start with council.
Amount of days as well as times.
So I plan to do this, this food is good, it's a Mexican food and before I bring inside the store and spending so much money, I want to try how they are doing. And if they, if you guys permit me more than a one day, we miss more than one day, then I can see the business and I might be grab that food inside the store and make a restaurant.
Well, well, so thank you, so right, we'll have to take a look at the ordinance, we can't, we can't change the rules today. Yeah. Just want to make sure you understand that, but we can, we can definitely ask our city manager to provide us with the ordinance for review and and we'll, and we can potentially revisit it if there's willingness to do that.
You have a petition?
Yeah.
You have a petition?
The, yeah. What people sign, yeah. Hundred fifty-five signatures here that want more than one day a week, customers that would be interested in having more than one day a week.
Okay.
That's not even everybody, so.
Maybe maybe you could leave a copy of that with our office or we can get you a copy back.
Okay.
To take a look. But we, you know, we still, we would have to follow our process for an ordinance. Okay.
One, like I said, the only thing I find is twenty sixteen and it.
It's been a while since we looked at it.
Yeah, and it pretty much only from what I found talks about public property. Not like hers or commercial.
Yeah, yeah, and so so the the this also within our zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay, okay. Got it.
Needs to be revisited.
Okay. Why?
Can I ask them two questions? I know that's not typically what we do.
You can ask a question, true.
Okay, so um. When you say, you know, you're sort of testing this to see if it makes sense to bring it in the store, would that be into the old subway space?
Yes.
Okay, great, and then have you had any complaints or issues with people talking about how many parking spaces the food trucks taking up right now? Okay, great, but you have so two on that and a hundred and fifty plus on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Complaint to us about any parking issues and the noise issue that there, if there is any noise issues, they're taught work in talks with an electrician.
Just quiet that down, yeah, yeah, it is pretty loud. Okay.
Yeah, I take care of that issue.
All right, I mean, I could have come to the store and asked you both those questions, but I'm happy to ask them here.
No, that's okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Are there others in the audience who would like to speak tonight under honor range? Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Oh, Dave, please.
Evening. David Lutton, Baker Road Land Holdings. I'm speaking tonight to object to a proposed council action and offer a different course of action. Month ago, my team was here for a working session. Your consultants, your consultant, Mr. Wayland was here along him from D P W. We had a good discussion, some differences were expressed, concerns, but no action was taken regarding the report that we are required to file with Eagle concerning the new well that we've drilled on the so Kingsley property. And which we had shared ahead of that working session with with council. We asked that council either prove language in the report that pertained to the city or that you expressed that you had no objection to the language that was in the report. As regards to the city. A fairly simple request. Twenty-five days later, last Friday, we received Dustin's office the packet for tonight. And we're quite surprised to find a motion which carries many, many recommended changes, two or three pages of changes for the report that our consultants wrote. It's not yet been submitted to Eagle. The city in this proposed motion seems to me to be jumping ahead to normal negotiations that would take place regarding a new well being brought into the city system. The annexation of the land, which is now three years requested by our team. There have to be negotiations around all of that. But in its motion, the city is laying out a couple of what they won't do's before any negotiation has has begun. It it seems premature to us. It a couple of the points involved would conservatively add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cost of the project. Remind you that the motivation of the project is to build moderately priced housing in Dexter, which there is a distinct shortage of adding costs to the project will increase the cost of the ultimate housing. So we were startled by the proposed motion. We received it at two thirty on Friday before a three-day holiday weekend, we didn't have any chance to react to it formally with with you. And I'm sorry to say this, but it feels like a power play to me. I'm asking myself, why in the world would I accept this this motion as fact and and determining some of the shape of future negotiations with the city? I intend to come into and operate in good faith. So here's my suggestion. I will delay filing the report that my team prepared for Eagle. I'd like to ask that tonight, rather than acting on the proposed motion in your packet, that you follow up on what you said you would like to do, which is appoint a subcommittee to work on the well and the annexation issues. And let's get meetings scheduled with my team and the subcommittee and begin to hammer out deal agreements. The essentially I'm proposing, let's do a working meeting with the subcommittee and get after some of these these issues. But we were startled by the content of the proposed motion. I assume Mr. Wayland was hired by you. Ironically, I'm probably paying for that out of the development money that I've already put into the city. So you get back two or three pages of changes to a report that I've already paid experts to prepare without any discussion. And so that's my objection and and suggestion. Would you use your time tonight, get the subcommittee organized, and let's get on with scheduling interaction between my team and the sub. Thank you.
Thank you for attending, and I did. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak under non-arranged? Let me go to the online folks, is there anyone online that would like to speak under non-arranged? Josh, I'm not seeing any hands from my distance.
No.
Okay. Very good, we're down to item F, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? If you none is a good sign. Item G is approval of the agenda and we have a request by our staff to add one item to the consent agenda or new business, however you propose, related to the Dexter Chamber Commerce Music in the Park authorization. It's at the top of the supplement.
I move, we approve the agenda with the addition of the second consideration item on the consent agenda as outlined in the supplement.
Okay, great. Is there a second? Motion by why, second by some Pharaoh. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the agenda, Justin.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Tao.
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Popoff.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes, motion carries. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to item I, which is our upcoming meeting list, that's on page eleven of the packet. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting list? Yes.
I know this is something that wouldn't go on here necessarily, or it wouldn't go on here, but we are having a meeting tomorrow at seven with the Historical Society to continue the discussion about the historical sign boards, so just as a heads up to everybody.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other comments or meetings we should do or? Okay, we'll move down to our first report tonight from our Public Services Superintendent. Welcome, Tim, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Got two week report, went off for a week of that, but feel any questions you guys have?
How about the damage? How bad is the damage? I noticed you wrote down the due to in the industrial park, right?
Industrial park damage. Well, it's actually trouble in industrial park?
Yes.
Yeah, so they did a project about ten years ago and the people that came to me and was asking if there's, they 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 did a camera down there and they really couldn't see anything, so they got a better camera or something and ended up finding that there's a line going through it. They said, well, they did a project through there, fiber optic project about ten years ago. And they had Steve DeWolf, local contractor, who was coming in to take care of that issue. It was just the line that was through, I mean, it was, it was a problem, it's nothing to do with us, because it's a need itself, but I gave them the right phone numbers and stuff to people to contact to get over, so because they're gonna have to sewer, I hate to say that word, but yeah, do something to get their money back, recoup their money.
Other questions for Tim? You want to share what what happened at the fire station today, what they're doing out there?
Yeah, so
Please.
They were trying to look for the sewer main today to tap into it, unfortunately, it's about sixteen feet deep. And in the process, they hit the water line. So they're just got a text from mayor, sounds like they found sewer. But they've been instructed tonight that they don't go home until it's backfilling underneath the water main, they can shore up everything else, and then they can go ahead tomorrow to tap sewer if they need to, but do what they can do, the water main needs to be braced.
What?
So that tomorrow the brush house has water?
Yes, that's why, yeah.
That's what I figured.
They, uh like I told John earlier, that I'll be buying them a gift card or something, those people are the most
They are.
kindest and people and just, I mean, yeah. I thought there'd be, you know, really, I would be a great, and they're not, so they totally thanked me and I don't know why. It's all, so they're, they're good people. Oh.
Thanks, I, I was just, stuff like that happens and you guys are on top of it and handling it and making it so that the community can keep going forward.
Yes, absolutely, hopefully they can take care of tonight, and I hope they can get a sewer, and I just, two hours left, that's a lot of dirt, so.
How long do you think they'll be occupying the right of way still? If you had to guess.
I had to guess in more weeks.
Two more weeks.
But I don't, but don't hold me to that.
No, I just guessed, guessed.
Right, I know. Because of first of June.
I I I think they, they were likely to be a couple of weeks in June.
But the foundations are going in right now. I seen that.
Yeah, that's good. Other questions for Tim? Anything else to report?
I got one more thing, the filter was repaired last week. They put the last propane on today, we have some parts that we had to order, put them together, get it next week, so that should be hopefully up.
Great. Thanks for being here tonight. Next up is our Community Development Manager, Michelle, how are you?
How are all the council doing? Excellent, you have my report in front of you, before I go into the couple of verbal updates that I have, please let me know if you have any questions on the things that are in my report.
Joe? I do, but I can't find the notes. Apologies, go ahead.
I can start with the verbal updates.
Thank you.
Okay, just one last time asking if there are E R S T Ps to be come around breaking some of the the plot. Trying to begin yourself. I don't know. The turkey map has been updated to reflect the changes in public parking ratios for the downtown, and specifically talking about the thirty-two ninety parking block of the U S Republic or being able to be used by the public. That map has been updated on the website and it has been distributed to all the town businesses. Last week, one of the business owners his cars had been towed. They needed to understand what was going on, so that's all taken care of. We have, we, it's spring and we have suddenly a couple of developers, well, three of them specific, interested in our thirty forty-five Broad Street project. We've had in the thirty forty-five Broad Street Subcommittee has had a couple of meetings with one, Michigan Capital. There are two others that staff has talked with and one I met with today on site and another one that I'm having a meeting with on June ninth. If there continues to be interest, the thirty forty-five Broad Street Subcommittee will be convened and I believe the gentleman that I spoke to today will be sending me an email indicating an interest in having that meeting, so. It's spring and it's good. That's what I've got, Joe, did you have a question for me? Okay.
You're all set. Anyone else with a question for Michelle? Ray?
Under uh, to 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 Northern United Brewing, they're they're gonna have a a coffee shop or just a
So Northern United isn't having it, this new company is going to rent space
Oh, I see.
In it. And conduct its own business, so it'll have a roasting operation and a small cafe. In the ordinance, you can have accessory retail, but it it can't go beyond a certain percentage of the total square footage. This will not go beyond the total square footage.
Will there be, it won't be a drive-through?
No, there is not a drive-through. I don't think that.
Just a cafe.
It's just a little cafe, yes.
Thank you. Wow?
And following up on that, this is an established business as far as I can tell, right, like they used to have a didn't they used to have a storefront in Nicholas Arcade?
I believe they still do.
Okay, so it's
This is a little expansion for.
Okay, great. It's good coffee.
Good to know.
The fourth one is down, ain't it?
I mean.
It won't be adding additional fluid right to the sanitary sewer, because this is a dry operation.
Oh.
The cafe obviously will have some. But the roasting one.
Anything to report?
That's it.
Very good, thanks for being here this evening. As we move down the agenda, J three, the sheriff report is in the packet. Before the new format, June.
Yeah.
Thank you, I don't have a comment on the sheriff's report, but Lieutenant Hunt is retiring in a month. And I was thinking that we could potentially do a proclamation for him, and I'll be happy to write that if that's something that council wants to move forward with. He was at the at the Memorial Day Celebration, he leads the the sheriff group that comes for bearing of the flags and he mentioned that this was his last time doing it. I thought it would be a nice thing from our community for him to do.
Good idea.
Yeah, I agree. I was actually gonna ask about if there's a retirement party for him and if we can find out about that. But this is also great.
Look into that for us.
Oh.
Thank you. Any other comments related to the sheriff report?
Did they find their misplaced truck?
The the I don't, I don't think it was the sheriff, that was Lot Fantine.
Right, they were transferring it and it lost.
Hey, I I don't know.
It's not at my house.
Stay tuned on the next report, right here.
All right, okay, pretty big, eh? Truck size.
All right, I'll keep moving down the agenda to Justin, your report on the city management board, please.
Sure, so I did have a couple of additional items in the supplemental report. And then quite a few items in the in the main report. So starting off, really good news, we got our main community stabilization payment. Yay. I did follow up with Anna from the senior center and got clarification on what they're asking for. And so I wanted to gauge city council's appetite for one number over the other for presentation in the in the budget coming up. So what was her, so followed up with Anna, she she came back with the with the blurb that's included in the packet.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking council's gonna want me to include the sixty-five number, not the fifty-five number.
Yeah, from my perspective, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. And then we had some folks come to the Parks Commission at the last meeting to talk about wanting to add a ramp for the Monument Park gazebo, and I expect them to come to city council's next meeting on June ninth. And we'll have a recommended item or a recommendation from Parks Commission to council. We, we don't have any specs or engineered drawings or anything like that to accompany that yet. But if council has an interest in moving forward with that, we can talk about that at the at the next meeting.
It's been talked about in previous years, we just never pulled the trigger on it, never made a decision on what side of the thing of the park to impact it. So now.
Thank you, I actually had a chance to connect with the two ladies that are spearheading this and they were actually collecting some signatures yesterday at the at the Monument Park and I connected with them, they were very kind to and quick to acknowledge that they are see not seeing this as a oh, they need to gather signature of something that council is not interested to do, but they were very much acknowledging that, yes, the conversations have been around, they went to the parks and very happy with that as well and that they're approaching this from the perspective and they were telling people that they were gathering signature from, that they're approaching this from the perspective of sharing the community input and adding to the voices. So it was a very positive connection with that.
Great, can you elaborate on the sheriff's office? Great. Can you elaborate on the sheriff's office about not using banked and unbanked dollars for our special events now? Having a contract that.
Sure.
Does that mean I will get a lower monthly billing because they typically don't fulfill their hourly obligation?
Well, more importantly, what happens when we have some type of event and we have more support than we normally do? How does that work?
Yeah. So so this was an item that I wanted to bring up and kind of to talk through with council. So the the Washington County Sheriff's Office has a new sheriff. The incoming sheriff has value has has spent some time looking at the contracting partners contracts. And the sheriff's organization has determined that the banked hours concept is not in the contract and wants to do away with it. Now, what that means for us is that the city of Dexter, along with our Western collaboration partners, which are Dexter Township and Webster Township. We're all in this Western collaboration together. And so whenever there were unfilled shifts at at the sheriff's office and in their in their patrol. They would take those and add those to banked out.
Right.
And so whenever there was something like an event or they would do like a targeted patrol, like if they brought in, you know, four or five officers to do road enforcement all at the same time. They would take the those additional costs and apply them to the banked hours rather than doing an additional bill. So what that meant is that we, since a lot of the events were happening in the city, we we were the ones benefiting the most from the banked hours concept. But because we also contribute the most to the sheriff's office from the collaboration, there's kind of some give and take there. Now, now that they're doing away with the banked hours, they're going to be billing each community for the actual services rendered within that community. So we're instead of getting getting our monthly bill, which was based on the dollars for the PSU. So, you know, they would take the, you know, our three PSUs times the annual cost, I think it's like a hundred and eighty thousand and then divide that by twelve months. But we're still getting the 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 cost of the PSU. So like, it's like a hundred and seventeen dollars an hour or something like that. So, you know, our reduced PSU cost, but billed hourly essentially for the actual services rendered in the city. But if a an event comes in that needs additional sheriff's office services, then there's one of two options. One is it gets billed to the community that the event is taking place in. Option two is the event contracts directly with the sheriff's office for those additional officers. My thought is that we require the events to contract directly with the officers. But I'm just warning everybody that the event organizers aren't going to be very happy with that.
Well, we didn't generate this. This is being generated from a revenue standpoint on the county level. Is this gonna hurt us financially? Are we gonna pay less per month for PSU?
So theoretically, it 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 should cost less.
Right.
Because they, because of the shifts that were going unfilled.
Yeah, I mean, they had massive amounts of banked hours, as I recall, last year.
Yeah.
So so what if we? Are we allowed to? I mean, could we change our form and get them to agree to additional costs, like the people who want to do the events, but they run it through us, they just reimburse us?
So like, 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 we we still pay the sheriff's office and then we we back charge the.
You know, let's let's say the event, the event needs a sheriff for six hours. We say, okay, your permit fee for using the park that requires the sheriff officer is, you know, seven hundred dollars more. And they would charge us a seven hundred and we'd get reimbursed as part of the activity.
That that is an option.
Then they don't, then they don't have to deal with the sheriff directly. We do and we're cost neutral. Just throwing it out there.
Wow. How many events are we talking about here? I mean, I know plein air and that's us. Probably Dexter, well, whatever Dexter Days is called.
Dexter Summer Festival, all the parades.
Great.
The Dexter and Arbor Run. There's.
The parade is two.
Memorial Day, Homecoming.
Fourth of July.
And then the light parade. It's a Dexter Chamber Light Parade. They they do it in the in the winter.
It's like eight vehicles.
Also, so my 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 point. My point would be, why don't we get an estimate of what those costs are and talk to different groups that would be requesting those things like, you know, maybe the schools can help us out with the homecoming event and maybe we split it because it's a community event or something, you know what I mean? Talk to the light parade. I mean, let's see, let's see what those actually are. I I think what you said about if it's a community event, maybe we work out some type of a cost sharing type of a thing. But like, for instance, Dexter and Arbor Run, that's that's a business, right, that's set up to do that, whether they do it for charity or what, but it's not the schools, it's not the road, it's not, you know.
What about, and I, sorry, I'm out of order.
No, you're okay.
But what about this planned? Festival that the KFC and the Legion are having in June here, isn't it in Sioux Township?
Yeah, that that I believe that that's at the KFC, which is in Sioux Township.
So we don't have to issue them no permits, nothing? Okay.
Well, again, just so we're not caught lack of direction, can we at least understand what the, get an estimate of what those different events might cost somebody or cost us or them, so as big as we can come up with a revised way of doing business? When does this go into effect anyway?
So the the sheriff's office is eliminating the bank towers immediately.
Immediately.
When's their contract though?
End of next year. So December of twenty twenty six is when it expires.
I'll have to look at that at the end of next year and see how much money we save.
So do you think we could request like a sixty day period to figure out how to handle that?
We could request it. I think that.
In the spirit of cooperation. Well, I mean, do we have anything planned like sixty days? I mean. Well, like, well, to your point, the you know, it's, is it in early June? Usually, I think it's for Saturday or whatever. I think we're probably already past that. The the parade, the parade hit after the announcement. You know, so, but I mean, I assume we're covering that.
Yeah, I mean, I I haven't heard from the sheriff otherwise.
It would be good to have in county. It's like, I mean, did you use for the Memorial Day parade last year? You know, how many, what was it that got attributed to that? Find out what those numbers are.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, and then they they gave me an estimate of the number of deputies, but I can, I can, you know, that's number of deputies times the cost of a deputy times, you know, how many hours. So sure, I can, I can, I can get those estimates from them.
Right, but we have the cost and number of deputy hours, you know, we need for whatever. I agree.
Yep.
Yeah, may maybe it's a drop in the bucket.
More paper.
I I I think it's a hundred, like a hundred and seventeen an hour. And so.
Yeah, my point is if they use a hundred banked hours. You know. But they, but they, I mean, the normal amount of banked hours is two hundred. Five hundred, you're only using fractional. Let's find out.
Will we get a refund on banked dollars?
So in for four twenty twenty four, we did get a refund and it was like thirty thousand dollars.
Well, but going forward, we just won't get charged correct.
Right, okay.
Correct. So. I I guess the other question is. So let's say we go through the year just using round numbers, right? We get to the end of the year and we're two hundred hours we're banked. Right? And we go back and we look at all the other community events and there's a hundred and fifty hours that it costs for those. We say, well, we already budgeted blah, blah, blah for the public safety units. This is less than, you know, our overall budget, so we're okay with it the way it is, you know, because but the problem is knowing what that's going to be ahead of time, because you're not going to know until the end of the or are they gonna, are they gonna do it every month? Every month they're gonna say, oh, you only have this much, we're only targeting.
Yeah, they're 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 billing us in arrears for services, for actual services.
Well, I mean, that's the other thing is, I mean, the part of it might be that, well, we've already budgeted that amount and we could cover the additional, the costs for the additional events. Like I said, my my guess is my my thought is that if it's a community type of that, maybe there's a cost share with the organization and that fits. Well, we cover some of it and they cover some of it, but if it's a specific thing, you know.
Well, the other option.
Build it into our process.
Yeah, we could also look at it as, you know, we will cover up to the first under two hundred dollars.
Yeah, right. Okay, still yours.
And then council asked for an update on when the next in-person public safety facilities meeting is taking place, and that is this Friday. On site.
Okay, what time does that start? Nine?
Nine. There's a copy of the summer newsletter in the packet along with a copy of some renderings of a potential playground scenario for Milk Creek Park North. We, we did get notified that the House passed the the required motion to move the trust fund approval forward. We're still, but we're still waiting on on the grant agreement from from the state.
So when do we have to either, like, though that's option two, there was another option before, I think.
Yeah.
You know, when, when, when does all that get finalized after the grant gets awarded?
Yeah, so so we'll finalize the.
This is just FYI, you're keeping us in the loop for now.
Correct, correct. Yep, yep. So we'll, we'll, council will be asked to approve the the grant agreement with the state. Council will be asked to approve the contract with Smith Group for and for engineering services. And then, and then we'll move into into design or well, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward with with kind of finalizing what the design looks like. And then if anybody has any questions.
No questions for Justin?
Good job.
Joe, handle. Joe. Um, so on the with the, what is it, community stabilization payment?
Yep.
So the last bullet point there says recapitated the required military down to one point two seven seven mils. And that's, that's for the.
The GEO for repayment of the fire station bond.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I looked at what we had originally proved, it was about one point four four. One point one seven more.
So the 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 number for the GEO bond should be down from the the current fiscal year to what's proposed for the upcoming fiscal year.
You brought forward a list and you said GEO or general operating streets and then the bond.
Yeah, correct.
And they said deep, 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 and they added up to a number that we kept the same as we did for last year.
Yep, and and from that, the GEO bond is going to be reduced even further.
That's what I'm saying. So the GEO bond's going down by point one seven mils.
Correct. Yep.
So what I'm asking is, is it too late to adjust the GEO mileage up to keep the tax rate the same, but.
So 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 we we've issued the public hearing notice. The public hearing is scheduled to take place at the June ninth council meeting. At that point, you can, you can make the the final motion to set the rate at what you want to set the rate at.
Okay. Do you think you need to offset the reduction in the in the general? Yeah, I mean, because, I mean. Just to keep the tax rate the same. Doing quick math, if it's point one seven, it's thirty five thousand dollars, it's not very much money, but I mean, the budget is on the tight side, so.
Yeah.
Other questions for Justin? Okay, I'll drop down to my report. Would you plan to have a recommendation for new students to point these at the next meeting? Olivia, you're getting down to two more meetings with us.
Are there any students?
I think there's lots of.
Or are you a senior this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And athlete of the month.
Yeah.
Congrats.
Oh, thank you.
It's awesome. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, we'll keep this moving. Are there? Oh, Joe, thanks for the shout out. Oh, thank you for the picture. Appreciate it. Was not able to get one. I don't know how much legally is that, but all rights.
All rights reserved.
I almost put a smiley face after. Any council reports under J seven? Seeing then we'll go to the consent agenda with a reminder that we added K two.
My move, we approved the two items on the consent agenda, both consideration items, one bills and payroll on the amount of five hundred and three thousand three hundred fifty nine dollars and thirteen cents. And two, summer concert series road closure requests from May to August.
Thank you, motion by what?
I second.
Second by Sanam, thank you both. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Pop off?
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Tell?
Yeah.
All Day?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. So we're down to new business item M one, which is the consideration of the Baker Road Land Holdings request for feedback on hydrologic evaluation. There's a suggested motion that's in the packet that is written out and covers a lot of, a lot of angles. Let me just share some thoughts before anybody makes a motion, if that's okay. The well has been the one item that council has focused on as perhaps the biggest benefit of the annexation request. I don't know if that's completely fair to say, but it drew a lot of attention as a very strong reason why we might be in favor of that. That request. I think that's stating that fairly for everybody. Mr. Lutton is obviously here to the time to come tonight to put a lot of money into the well. And a lot of good has come out of that effort. I mean, we we now know there's water there. We know there's quite a bit of water there. I think, I think that we have a responsibility, we're, we're, well, we are clearly mentioned in the report a number of times. I went back and looked at it. There's no argument that we have, we have participated up to a point in this thing. Eagle has also participated already. They have approved a work plan. Is that correct? That has been followed, or at least as closely as we could tell, they've followed it. They've been onsite, Eagles been onsite, there's reference to an onsite meeting in one of the pages of the report. You know, as as nowhere in our charter or in our zoning ordinance, maybe in our master plan, there's some new language that talks about annexation and all that stuff. But, you know, essentially the process, the process is what we make it. At some point, at some point, we're going to be asked, do we like this idea enough to approve the request, which then gets sent to the state? Now, there's different ways we can complicate it. We could do four twenty fives, we could do whatever, but the basic request is, do we like it? If we say yes, it goes to the state of Michigan and then there could be some debate. I think, I think tonight that setting up this committee to talk to the developers is a very important thing. Because I think we need to start outlining what this. Committee to talk to the developer is a very important thing, because I think we need to start outlining what this might look like after three years. When we were here a month ago at the work session. Dave, I believe your team uh asked us to. Pass something or, or issue some type of written statement. Uh, with the thought that that was beneficial going to Eagle. Um, I don't believe there's a requirement that we do, we have to do that. Um, I do, I do think that the report leaves out some things that if we were gonna. If Eagle were in the room today, we'd want to say to Eagle. You know, at, at some point, this report needs to go to Eagle in order for the process to continue, they're gonna have their comments, they're gonna have their insights. Um, if, if council wants to have a, a meeting or two with Baker Road. Or land holdings. And we want to postpone action on consideration of a support to the report or no objection of the report or whatever we're calling this. Long motion. Um, I'm okay with trying that, I think communication is always good, I um. There's some, you know, Dave, you, just to make sure, you know, I was listening to, to what you said here. Council didn't see this motion until Thursday or Friday of last week either. We asked staff to put together something for us to consider in response to your team's request. You know, and there's, this motion has what, nine items on it? Three A and then, you know, th- there's a lot here, uh, I'm not sure that I, I fully follow everything. I'm not sure I follow the concern about the isolation distance, for example. If that's a fair request, I don't know why we would object to them. Doing that, but, but I, I, I think that there's been a, my interpretation is that there's been a very conservative review and proposal. Put here, is that fair? So I, I would be okay with establishing our, or amending our organizational matters. Setting up a committee and then talking through. Some of this more directly with Baker Road Land Holdings before we take any action on. Motion to support or object or whatever you want to call it, no objection. Uh, I, I opened up, there's, there's seven of us or six of us here, Joe?
Um, so. Coming into tonight, um. When I went through the packet, looked through everything, I was okay with the, with the. Propo- the proposed resolution as it was, um. Frankly, I, I mean. I don't know that we need to do it again, like, like we said, it's not in the city right now, um, you know, they're free to. Mention the city of Dexter in there and say that they've been working with us, but I. I, I'm okay if somebody comes to us and requests and says, hey, we would like you to do this. Then we go off and do it, I'm not okay with somebody coming back and telling us how we should have done it. I think the items that are in here are important. And I think that they represent real concerns and issues. That if the city of Dexter is going to sign off on it, we have a responsibility to the people of Dexter. Not to the developer, not to the person that drilled the well, not to their experts, but to, to the residents of Dexter to make sure that. We specify what's important to us and when we say, yes, we agree with the submission. That it includes the items that we don't agree with, so. I'm okay not submitting the report, I'm okay submitting a report that highlights the items that, um. We have a concern with or that we don't necessarily agree with. From the applicants' experts, as I think is listed out here. I'm, I mean, we could have discussions about how conservative we want to be on what those things might be, but. Um, and, and so I would agree that a discussion should be had, but. I, I don't see us saying to the developer, please write us a document that will rubber stamp for you so you can submit it to the state. But it's not what we're here for.
Agreed, agreed.
So.
Um, I agree with uh what Joe said completely, um, we asked the staff to share their. Expertise and, and concerns and those are the items that we eventually have to, to talk about. Right, it's, it's um, whether it's. Right now or if it needs to be revisited later, it's um, to me, we. We can't just say that we are putting these things aside, so I. I'm okay with us having more conversations about it, but these are the things that to me, if I'm. Looking for. Expertise and we have asked our staff to provide that, um, and if these are their concerns. I respect that and I want to know what are the, um, what are the concerns? What are the potential things that we are walking into? I would hate that we send a report, or a report goes to. Uh, from the developer, we are not sending it and they can take these and, or, or leave it. Go to Eagle and then we turn around and have to address these yet again, so sometimes to me it's better to do the work upfront than. Having to do it multiple times, um, but if the. More discussion on this is, would help it, then uh I'm okay with that.
It did, I just think. I think some of these statements. Are somewhat after the fact. It's part of my problem with it, so. Specifically the isolation distance, I mean, if we knew what the isolation distance was when they drilled it. And we didn't formally object. Let me, let me say it a different way. Let me say it differently, if. If we were the one looking for water and had drilled there, we'd be asking for the isolation distance. I don't know, that's always that easy. Even if, even if Dan told you, hey, I think you should drill here. Why, I'm just, I, I'm just saying that that's, some of it's, some of it's based upon the guidance of the consultant that we're following. No, but, but my, my, my guess, my guess is that. If you felt that was the right spot to try based upon the existing information, we would have followed his lead, knowing we would have had to ask for the. Isolation distance is my point. I'm, I'm just, I, I'm just saying that we, that some of these statements are fairly strong after the fact, so. But. I, I know my, 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 my point though is that. If Eagle would permit it. It'd probably be okay with us, right? Okay.
There, there, there might be a variance given with uh, well, five.
There was.
That's why I'm asking.
So, there was.
It was.
Well, I'm pretty sure that's. Thank you for waiting, problem?
Um, I think discussion is good, right, I think a lot of people are bringing up very important concerns and. Perhaps certain parts of the statement are a little bit strong. But at the same time, cannot be dismissed entirely because some of them are quite important. After all, the American Waterworks Association is a subject matter expert.
I didn't pick on that one.
They're not mandatory, right, but it's just the thing is. It was voice opinion that there are certain things that we're asking that may be out of place. Which I don't necessarily agree with, certain things that we're asking for are very appropriate to ask for. Um, very important to ask for and they are, remind you, minimum standards to ask for. Um, but certainly they're not mandatory for municipality, but at the same time, we need to have a very, very good and strong reason. To justify why physical requirements and standards should find an exception. Um, yes, I think perhaps that there should be discussion, further discussion. But it also needs to be clear that certain standards are to be met. Because it is our responsibility, as Joe pointed out, to make sure that we're doing good by the city of Dexter.
Welcome. So does, so the, the question for council is, does somebody want to make a motion to? To issue this resolution and, and encourage. Them to submit the resolution with the report, or do we want to meet and have discussions first? Right?
Where, where is the difficulty in this motion? What's being, what's being addressed here that's? That's so concerning?
Is that much for me?
Anybody?
Ray, I have no problem, I, I, truthfully, what I, what I would like to do is have a meeting with Eagle.
Well, I never thought of that. Uh, Mister Lutton.
I don't, I don't, I don't ever. I don't, I don't ever have a problem meeting with Eagle.
No, I, that's, they are what they are, so.
But, but I don't, you know, again, I don't know, I don't know how to get there necessarily, okay, we, we, we've taken a, we've taken a cautious. Watchdog approach to what's going on. While the question's been presented to us, we've not wanted to take any responsibility. We've not wanted, although we, although we've shown interest in a potential well as a public benefit, we've talked about that in numerous meetings. But we've, you know, we've been hands off, it's not our property, it's not our decision to do the well, we're not, we didn't hire the contractor to do the well. Okay, but we did offer guidance on, on how to test it. To up to three days or seventy-two hours or whatever, and we did, we did jump in, that certain things we got excited when we. When we heard there was a little bit of water, we got, we got excited, uh. And that's not a bad thing, it's not a bad thing, I mean, the, the worst thing would be that they, they couldn't find water. You know, so I, I don't really, I don't really have a problem with the report, I'd like to, I'd like to. I'd like to know that somebody at the state is going to reach out to us and say, okay. What do you think? If we're, if we're being asked to look at this as a potential municipal well, what are your comments? And I don't think Dave should fear it either. Okay, I think he may, I think he may have concerns over how long this has been, you know, do our comments affect things? You know, the, the idea, do we have to drill a new well because this one's on an angle? Well, if we want a straight well, then we have to drill a new well, I have no problem with that, and, and, you know, if you look at the cost of the treatment works. That our cons- our consultant put together, it's about what, five million or six million, it's a big number, it's. It's a big number, drilling a new well at a hundred thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket on top of that. And, you know, and chances are, if we were to go forward with this long term. Some of those costs are probably us, ours as a municipality, if we're the owner of it. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I've been. I've been feeling that this is a good thing for the city since it was proposed, okay, now I might have been a little bit. Slow out of the gate to get it on the agenda or to have us engage with this a little bit and that's, that's my fault. But I don't, I don't object to the, I, I, I don't object to this report going in, I, I, if the. Person that invested the money is here asking us maybe to have a couple of meetings. I think it's probably worthwhile to establish our committee and have a couple of meetings and bring back whatever information. I mean, ultimately, he's, at some point, he's going to submit it, so this motion is going to be probably back in front of us. Probably doesn't hurt to have a, a conversation to see if it can be refined or, or if it needs to be refined at all. In a few weeks, if he's saying he doesn't mind waiting a few weeks or a couple of months, whatever it ends up being, that what we need. That would be my preference. And we're set up to establish the committee under M three.
Okay, so. Can I make a motion that we postpone this item until we are able to establish a subcommittee and have at least one meeting? With the developer to discuss this. Whatever this is, what is this?
It's so, it's a well report.
The well report to, yeah.
Okay, motion by Hubbard, second by Summer Pharaoh. I would, I would um, just ask that we could talk about the framework of the annexation as well as part of that. So instead of bounding the thing to just.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, just, uh, I could, I guess postpone this item, um. Until we have at least one further.
The subcommittee.
Yeah, subcommittee, establish the subcommittee to have at least one meeting to communicate.
With Baker Road Land Holdings.
Yeah.
As far as postponing it, it's taking a while, we've gotten feedback that things are taking a while, they're taking longer than they might have. It has been a long time that we said. That the applicant said they were going to look for a well, I mean, that, I mean significantly long time, that, that wasn't like just three months ago. Or something, that was like, no, like, it's been like sixteen months ago, right? So, I mean, yes, it has been three years, but almost half that time has been ball in the other court. So, um, and while we're postponing this and we're forming a subcommittee. The applicant could submit this report to Eagle without anything from us, it's not required. So, I mean, we are not holding up the process, this is up to the applicant on how the applicant wants to pursue.
Any thoughts on the postponement? Okay, please spell the vote. To postpone the site. Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Alday?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Tell?
No.
Popoff?
Yes.
Here. Yes, okay, so if we post, we didn't specifically, so this will come back to us after we've had at least one meeting. Subcommittee to be performed, right? Okay. Okay, new business item M two, consideration of resolution to notify township partners of interest in exploring different funding models for fireworks. You have a question? Sorry. I didn't see your hand, I didn't see your hand. I didn't see your, I didn't see your hand.
Is this appropriate? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm allowed, yeah, so I'm, I took the question. I think we simply stated that that's your decision. I don't think we, we, I don't think we formalized that at all, okay? But, but I think that was, that was, no, I know, that, I think that was some sentiment. My, my preference would be that you would wait and allow us to at least meet one time. And then depending on how that discussion goes, you can decide whether it's in your best interest or maybe we'll all decide it's in our best interest. Is that, is that fair? Thanks for clarification. Okay, um, new business item M two, uh, consideration of a resolution to notify our township partners of interest in exploring different funding models for fire services.
I want to move that.
Move by Tell. Thank you. Okay, discussion on page eighty-one. Eighty-two, eighty-three.
Well, I think it's obvious we need to do something that's cutting into our general fund so much and our costs have doubled over the last five years. That's an unacceptable level that we can't continue to do. Whether we explore it now or explore it later, it's going to come to a head.
So Dustin and I, Dustin took the first crack at this, or maybe Josh did, I'm not sure. Good, good, good job if you did, sir. And, and then Dustin and I kind of proofread it together before it made its way into the pack the last Wednesday or whatever it was. I'm interested in. Uh, I'm interested, is everybody okay with kind of how it flows? If it gets the message across without, you know, trying to get overly words, but the, everybody good with what it says?
It's very, very gentle, self-spoken, so good job. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Outstanding the olive branch of.
That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to do.
Deliberately didn't include some of the things that were said at some of the goals and objectives, uh, meetings. I, I figured if, if those things made it into the, into the resolution at the meeting. Okay. But, uh, um, thought maybe the, 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 the first, the first reach out would be a little, little more gentle.
Well, at the DAFD meeting that occurred two Thursdays ago. Our chair at the time had proposed, our chair. Dexter Township had proposed that. The AFD form a subcommittee to do it, and I suggested that. We can do it outside of DFD. I don't think it belongs at that table. It's, it's a subcommittee of the different communities. And ultimately, after a little discussion, they, they all agreed with that. And I told them that we were planning to have an item to invite them to the table. At our May twenty-seventh meeting, so. I think this is a good step. Appreciate you making the motion. Any further discussion needed then? So, so if we pass this, we're directing. You to send a letter to the. Chair copy the resolution and invite them to, uh. Sign some numbers to get this thing in the meeting, right?
Well, we never going to get, no, until we pull the trigger on this, so.
Okay, please call the vote to approve the resolution.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Summer Farrow?
Yes.
Pop Off?
Yes.
All Day?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you. Move down to M three, consideration of the amendment to our organizational matters resolution. And committee appointments to create a fu, a fire funding model committee, which would then participate on the. In the resolution that we just passed, as well as the, um, proposed Baker Road Landhold Development Evaluation Committee.
Will we approve the amendment to organizational matters resolution and committee appointments?
Motion by Summer Farrow?
I second.
Second by Aldag. Thank you both. Any discussion?
Uh, first, I'd like to apologize for. Interrupting in a non-Roberts Rules fashion earlier.
No problem.
I just would hope that as we consider this item. I do, I, I respect your authority to be able to allow for questions. However, I, I feel that what just happened. I, I, I didn't like it because it felt a little bit like we were trying to be persuaded to do one thing or another. And so I would hope that when we make decisions like this motion on the table. And we, you know, if there's any further discussion, that we stand alone as representatives of this city. And, and think about what's best for this city without taking those comments into consideration. Because that's a completely separate issue from somebody who has a completely different stake in this.
Any discussion on? Either the proposed appointments to the committee or the actual question?
I like the two candidates for the fire funding. Joel's, uh. Been around for a while, he knows the ins and outs. This pop office, were you involved in some kind of government city thing that you knew all about that?
He's certainly has shown interest in it when we've talked about it.
Well, that's what I need. I need people that are willing to go in there and stand their ground.
Thought it made sense that.
Good funding models are important. We have good funding models on the state. I think it was actually. Even included as a revenue that comes back to the townships, based on the population size and taxable value. Uh, was included in the previous, which is a wonderful document, really interesting to explore further.
We got some people in there that can utilize their expertise.
So I have a question. So at this point, we will also, um, discuss the committee for, uh, discussing the. The logic evaluation report, or is this going to be separate?
They're, they're, they're both, they're both part of one motion. We're establishing both committees at the same time.
Then I have a question for a while. Um, do you feel like at this time would be appropriate to, um, perhaps? Put some left and right limits to this committee so that it feels that it does what we want it to do.
I guess it's less that and more that I just object to. Having outside voices come in in the middle of a meeting when we have something coming up that directly. Pertains to that issue. To me, those comments should have been. Or, or should is a bad word. To, to, to me, I would have liked to have seen, heard those comments in non-arranged participation at the end of the meeting. And to let us sit here and purely discuss this without a, any potential for. Things to get in our heads. Uh, as this sits, I'm fine with it. Um, but yeah, that's more where I was coming from, if that makes sense.
I think, well, those of you that have known me a long time know that if, generally if a hand goes up. I'm probably going to take the question if I can take it because. It's just kind of my style for this, but if people take the time to come to the meetings, I want to do it. I appreciate what you're saying, though, and just.
And again, I totally respect your discretion to do that. I just, I also just wanted to make those comments, no.
I have no problem with it. Okay, so the, the matter at hand is established in the two committees by a modification of our organizational manager resolution. We have a motion by Summer Farrow, a second by Aldag. Further discussion? Dustin, please call the vote.
Uh, Pop Off?
Yes.
Summer Farrow?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Tell?
Yes.
All Day?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carried. I think those committees will serve us well. Thank you, everyone who has participated. Uh, item M four is a consideration of a proposal from OHM advisors. For intersection ADA design work on Dexter Annabelle Road relating to the Washington County Road Commission CMAC project for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand five hundred.
So I'll move it.
Move by Tell?
I'll second.
Second by Wow. Thank you both. Is there any discussion needed or questions on the proposal?
We, we do have Mark, Marcus and Stacy here if anybody has any questions.
For all four intersections, correct?
Three.
Three of them.
Yep, so, so, so three out of the four.
And we're responsible for everything but the electronics, uh, the approach?
So, it, um, it's, it's our own chain that i- it is, um, essentially the, the hard scape.
Okay.
So, uh, the ramps, the level landings.
Right.
Um, the bases on which the, the push buttons would sit. Um, but then all of the electronic work, um, the, the signal heads, all of that would be county.
And it'll meld into their system?
Correct, yeah, so, um, uh, and Marcus, you know, if you want to correct me on this. You know, I, I, my, my knowledge only goes so far, um, but, uh. Our, our, our system will integrate with the county system, or essentially our, our, our system will be part of the county system. Yeah, and so, um, uh. We won't have the ability to make direct changes to the signal timings.
Right.
But we, we will own the signal timings, like, we, we, we will make decisions on the signal timings and then tell the county what we, we want those signal timings to be. There is the potential in the future that we might be able to get access to make the signal timing changes ourselves. But, uh. When the project is done, everything will be ours.
Right.
But the county will essentially have the, the remote functionality to make the changes that we request. Or, or that, that, that we tell them that we want made.
Will they make changes they want without our request?
They should not be, they, they should not be doing that.
I was asked and answered and documented that they.
You know, look, see that, right?
It's in the minutes. It's in the pack, actually, in the last meeting with them, but that, I don't know if you got it yet, Dustin, but they. Part of that April meeting, uh, they did have a draft agreement already put together with feedback on that. They owe us. The city that back. Um, I don't know if you've seen that yet.
I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any.
Place for that to be. Included as well in that agreement, so it's not forgotten.
I mean, nothing against the county.
For your signals.
I just protected my interests.
How come you didn't wrap the water main into this?
So this.
I wasn't going to ask you that unless you stood up.
So, we had a discussion with, um. In April, there at the county, it, it makes total sense to include the, say, the, uh. ADA pedestrian work as part of the CMAC project. And, and to basically, um, put that, really the only thing it, in M dot side, it's not going to be. It's all one project. The cost share agreement is strictly between the city and the county. That way, the project is kind of the raised question, too. It's one project, everything works together. The county's already has to move a handle or two and is pulling conduit for their controller work. Um, so that way, everything gets fully integrated. You don't have multiple contractors playing figures. The, um, discussion related to the water main was that the city would do that separately in advance of the county contract. Um, but while the road's under the county closure, so we can take advantage of the traffic control and save those costs. Uh, but the advantage of doing that is a standalone project. Two-fold, uh, one, uh, you don't have the red tape of, uh, a non-participating category. Them that, and, and, and two, basically, you just, you sidestep all the other NIPA and SHPO and. So the idea in that, you'll have that soon, uh, probably time, we will have it time for the next meeting. The design is kind of already done because there's so many utilities in the intersection. Uh, when we're coordinating with the county, we said you need to show us where water could fit. So, you know, it's at least, I would say, fifty percent or so design. We know where it's going to go. Everybody's agreed on that. Um, so the OHM scope for that is going to be limited to really more permitting. Uh, and bidding. The design is already essentially completed. It's part of the.
Can I answer your question?
I don't know. Do you anticipate that any of the hard scape is usable?
No, not, not with the, um. Full requirements, the, you're familiar with ADA, how finicky it is, and the main thing is the proximity. Of existing push buttons related to the level landing. Possibility, so, um, now the scope, so this has been looked at multiple times by multiple folks. Both in our roads group, when they were asked to look at it by the county and then the municipal group, who looked at it for you. Um, we've all, we all agree that basically we're going to have a whole set of change out of the. Best street routing.
You think you'll have to modify the curb?
Yeah. And that's a lot of times, even if the ramps themselves are, are compliant, it's the, the first step essentially. That isn't big with the ball. Um, that's why we. Most people have noticed, uh. A lot of the newer installs that meet ADA have an issue with standing water sometimes. Because of those slope requirements are so strict, it's tough, it's tough to meet ADA and get good drainage. So, sort of, we wouldn't. Or curb through, you know, around the intersection where crosswalk would go, they had a pretty good lift to keep the drainage, you know, off the sidewalk, but. The new standards restrict your ability.
When will we see the water main for bowl?
Definitely at the next meeting.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for coming to. Okay, any other questions? To approve?
Yep. Tell?
Yes.
Summer Farrow?
Yes.
Pop Off?
Yes.
All Day?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Marcus, thanks. Uh, item M five is consideration of amendments to the city council rules.
Will we prove the amendments and city council rules?
Motion by Summer Farrow? W, uh, request this to be on the agenda. I'll let you.
Yep, the, um, proposed amendments are the. Proposed agenda items for future meetings on the agenda. Um, I really think that, uh. Justin's city manager report and having the items that are upcoming there is an excellent way to. Project what we're going to have and keep track of what you might be interested in seeing there, so I think it does a better job than having them on the agenda. And on the declaration of the conflict of interest, you, you know. We really. We've had it invoked a couple of times, but I think we kind of determined that it wasn't necessary, necessarily that there was a conflict of interest. we've had it invoked a couple of times, but I think we've kind of determined that it wasn't necessary, necessarily that there was a conflict of interest. Um, they're very rare. I mean, I think in all the times that I was on council, I think I once, twice. Actually, I think one time Wade Trum was quoting that some business and mayor had to recuse himself from that discussion. But uh, aside from that, there are very few and far between. And the ordinance itself says as soon as you find out that there's a potential conflict of interest to contact city man, manager in our case for the city council. Um, so that's not something that has to, that should wait until the meeting, that should be, should never be a surprise when you get to the table and suddenly says, hey, I have a conflict of interest that should be um, known before that point. Um, and uh, addressed at that point, and obviously it can be brought up at the approval of the agenda if necessary.
Mr. Tell?
Can you give me an example, Joe? I currently work for DEXSTAC in the industrial park. You know, and I know their general managers and all that stuff, they pumping me for information all the time. So if they was to come forward with a building expansion, I would just notify Justin previous to the meeting.
Well, so.
What do, what do you want specifically from me?
Well, I think the thing, the very first question is, I, I would say yes, you'd contact Justin, you say, I think I have a conflict of interest. So we've had other situations, well, like we've had um, people that work for companies that were on bills and payrolls.
Right.
It's not a conflict for you to say, yeah, I approve the base, bills and payrolls. It's not like you're changing what they're gonna get, whether or not they get approved, that's done, right, that's done in the past, it's just paying off the bill. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess you could be, that they could come to you while you're at work and say, hey, you better vote for this when you're, when this comes up. Well, I know, so, but.
It's a union shop.
I mean, somebody could say that that's potentially a conflict, but it's supposed to be that you have a direct financial interest or someone in your family has direct. Well, DEXSTAC's gonna expand, that may not necessarily.
Let, let, let's say that we were gonna hire, let's say with this, with the new ADA ramp that we're talking about at the pavilion or the gazebo in the park, let's say that Dan showed an interest in constructing that. And he submitted a proposal to us to do the work. That would be an obvious, what, co, you know, situation where he would need to say, you know, look, I'm gonna use myself in any participation in council deliberation of who to hire there because I have a financial interest in it. That's the most straightforward.
Yeah, and I think to your, to answer you directly, yes, you would contact Justin as soon as you found out about, say, hey, I might have a conflict of interest, that would give Justin a chance to investigate it, decide, you know, when we have the discussion, he can give us feedback. He can contact the attorney for the city and say, hey, is this a conflict or not? I mean, there's all those things that if you've done, whereas if you wait until we're sitting at the table, we all look around each other, I don't know if it's conflict or not, maybe. You know, it should be done ahead of time.
Right.
So that when we get to the agenda, we're gonna prove the agenda, we can make that decision at that time what we need to do.
Well, I have another question, I'll let Sanam go then.
Thank you. Yeah, someone answered my question, but so my understanding was that the, at the end of the day, the council decides, okay, other than the very obvious financial, Dan building something. But.
Yeah, it's our judgment.
But other than those very obvious ones, um, that this body is the body that decides if that person has a conflict or not and should remain at, at the chamber or, or leave for, for the item. Um, and I, I understand that the the person needs to contact Justin, I think that's a great idea for what you just mentioned, that if there are things we need to ask our, our attorney or other ways, but at the end of the day, that decision of whether we consider a conflict or not sits with this body. So to me, having that agenda item ahead of time allows for that conversation before we get to an item that there is a consideration and the person has to leave. Some, unless we want that then says that, okay, this person, a, a person thinking they have a conflict, they'll bring it to Justin and that that information is ready as soon as the agenda item comes up, because even at the approval of the agenda means that we are having that discussion, so it should be noted that it's either at that item that it currently is, or at the beginning, or at the agenda. I just don't know when would then, then it would come up. That's, I think I'm confused that if we don't have it specifically and logistically, where does it make sense for it to come up? And for those who might not have had a chance or might not even think about potentially that it would be conflicts and sit at the table and they're like, oh, I'm second guessing myself, maybe I should bring this up. That allows for a time to do it, in my opinion.
Wow, I'm gonna go back to Ray.
Um, first of all, I don't disagree with anything that council member Senator Farrell said. I also wholeheartedly agree with everything that council member Aldag just said. I also would add that there are that leaving it on the agenda does increase our perception of transparency, and there are some people in this community who do have concerns about that, founded or not. Um, and in practical terms, for the most part, we ask it, we move on. But I do, you know, I was gonna bring up what Sanam said about, you know, there, there are definitely a number of scenarios I can come up with where it's like, you're sitting here and all of a sudden you're like, oh crap, I should have gone to Justin with this and I didn't. And there's an opportunity to do it. Again, practically speaking, that doesn't happen, so I think my main argument for leaving it on there is the transparency angle and the fact that it takes up virtually none of our time.
Right?
So the gist of this is what the board would consider in a, a financial impact to the member who had it, it would just be financial, or could you elaborate, or is there some kind of favoritism? Anything that's gonna be financial, tit for tat, trade for this? So, and um, would that person be forced to leave the room? Uh, why would I be forced to leave the room if I'm not involved in it? If, can I just go sit in the audience? Or then do I become their ale, like, can I speak for them?
Well, I, I, I can, I can, I can cheer the, the ordinance with, yeah.
Just tell me what the lawyer's gonna say.
Well, wait a minute, to, to, I'm not trying to understand everything you asked, but of the, the part that I got, if somebody has a conflict, you know, they're, they're not allowed to deliberate or vote on the item. Technically, what they should do is get up and just go sit in the audience for a second and come back. And that would be the formal way, that would be the formal way of not, you're not giving anybody the eye, you're not
Right.
hand signals, you, you've left the deliberation area. We've never had, I don't think we've ever had to do that. Maybe one time, I've had to do that. But that, that would be the protocol, if somebody did say, I have a conflict in an item, when it came up on the agenda, they could visit, they don't have to go outside and stand on the railroad tracks until we wave, wave them back in, they can, they can sit in the room.
I'm just looking for a concise definition.
Well, there isn't one, alright.
There you go.
No, there isn't one.
No, there, I'm, that's what I'm assuming.
I mean, the ordinance is long and lengthy and there isn't one.
Yeah, I mean, it can't specify, I mean, you could go all day.
That, that, that's why, that's why to Sanam's point, that there's a, there's a part in there that, that gives the judgment of this body at the time that the disclosure is made to determine whether they think, they feel it's a true conflict or not.
Well, I would expect the council member to step up.
Well, that's where, that's what he's, that's what the start said, it's, it starts with the person acknowledging it, and then, then our perception of that, we, we validate it if we want to. Thank you.
Would you disagree with that?
Uh, the, the, no, the, the, the only caveat I would say is um, it, the ordinance does say, leave, leave, leave the room.
Order says leave the room.
The ordinance says leave the room.
Yeah. Well, I ain't leaving. I don't, I don't know if we've ever done that. You, Joe, you had your hand up first?
Yeah.
No?
Alright, why?
Pablo?
I just wanna follow up on what Ray was asking and say that um, you know, in the last seated council we had, right, we had a lot of discuss, discussion about the word perception, perceived conflict of interest. And so to answer, to, not to answer your question, but to like address it about, is it financial or, or is it strictly financial or not? I mean, I, I, I don't think it is.
Hmm.
Um, with that said, we've sat here and had council members say, oh, there is a perceived conflict of interest for th- this person or that person, and then that person says, no, there's not. And then the council, the rest of the council is just like, okay, fine, whatever, let's just move on. Anyway, it, that's just, I wanted to give you that sort of background on the discussions that we've.
Oh, I'm, I'm well aware of the discussions.
Okay, good, alright, good, good. Um, but yeah, it just for me, it goes back to, it takes no time, leave it on there.
Certain parts of all this.
I bet, me, I bolded it to highlight those that were pertinent to the changes in the agenda.
But tho- those are changes from the ordinance?
No, no, the section, it's a section seventeen dash seven is from the ordinance. I just bolded the one and two, part of two, because that's the part that goes along with declaring a conflict of interest, which is the, the, the area that I propose changing on the, on the reform of agenda in the rules.
Well, so, so Joe, I guess I'm not fine. You, 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 you wanted to still say, you're not proposing that the ordinance changes.
No, 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 I'm just, it, at the top it says declaration of conflict of interest, the Steve Dexter ethics and conflict of interest ordinance states the following. And I just put in, you know, a section, section seventeen dash seven from the ordinance. And then underneath said, you know, essentially what I said at the beginning of the item.
Hello?
Um, I think it's important to the whole, whole perception thing and the whole getting clearance thing is kind of very important. Um, I think it is our ethical responsibility to make sure when we find ourselves in a situation where it is a conflict of interest that needs to be resolved by people who are subject matter expert, like a lawyer uh, via the city manager contact, right, rather than sit over here and see who is perceiving it to be a conflict of interest or not. It either is or it is not, and it is for someone with proper education and training to decide. So, uh, I do like your idea and the fact that we do need to point out that these things have been looked at, that if there is one, they are cleared or not cleared, and need to make it to an agenda. It can always be stated that, hey, someone identified that there was a conflict of interest. It was reviewed, it was found to be a conflict of interest for this particular item. On the agenda, this person will be excluded. But I think it is, shouldn't be the last minute, hey, do you have a conflict of interest? It should be um, a responsible ethical thing to do to declare it and have it cleared before it happens. I mean, we get to see the agenda ahead of time. It can be done, it can be added later on in the minutes that there was none found or no one declared any conflict of interest, or there was one found and this person is going to be excluded from this particular um, discussion and it's not ahead of time.
So I would like to um, make an amendment that we take the conflict of interest portion out of this motion. However, best way of saying it in proper rules is.
Who made the motion?
Um. I know, Pablo seconded, I think Joe made the motion.
I'll second, second team amendment.
Okay.
Say it again?
Second the amendment.
And what was the amendment, say that again?
To take the, so there were two items.
Right.
Part of this, to take the conflict of interest out, so just have the first, um, the future items being part of the city manager's report to keep that and then keep the conflict of interest as it is.
So the original, the original agenda, or the original motion is to, to essentially move the proposed section P to sit to the city manager report.
Right.
Essentially taking it off the agenda, letting him included as part of his manager report. The second part of the original motion is to delete F where we declare conflict of interest. That was the motion that Joe made and Pablo seconded. What's being suggested now by Sanam and seconded by Joe is that we're only gonna talk about, we're modifying the motion to include only moving P in the agenda, leaving F on the agenda.
And so there's, there, there's gonna be two, two votes.
Two votes. Yeah, the first vote will be to amend the original motion. Do I understand the amendment?
Yes.
I question?
I think the linchpin word here is perceived. Perceived by who? Me? The audience? Sloggy man? I don't know. If it's perceived by me, I'm gonna let you know. I'm assuming all my other colleagues would extend the same courtesy to me. But I, I'm fine, it, it's whatever, you know, I'm not gonna make it a.
We don't, our ordinance doesn't use the word perceived, by the way.
Yeah.
But that's what seemed to generate this especially.
That's what we've turned it to.
That's correct.
What we've turned it to.
If it, if I'm doing it, you're gonna know, you're not gonna perceive it.
Right.
Okay, so. Yeah. Yeah, the whole, the whole ordinance was put in place to be on the person that believes themselves to have the conflict.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and it's up to them to initiate that, otherwise council doesn't do anything unless somebody else perceives one ahead of time or decide, believes one ahead of time. But, okay, so we're gonna vote on the amendment to the original motion. And we understand what we're voting on? Okay, Justin, please call the vote to amend the original motion.
Popoff?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Tell?
Yeah.
Senator Farrell?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Alright, now we're back to the, now we're, now we have a motion that is to move uh, section P through the city manager report. Anything further discussion on that?
I perceive none.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Okay, please call the vote.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Senator Farrell?
Yes.
Popoff?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Tell?
Yeah.
Keo?
Yes. Motion carries, item, it is item six is discussion of soft cost items for the public safety facilities project.
Like me to lead in?
Yep.
Um, so city council awarded um, an original contract and then uh, contract amendments to Cunningham Limb for uh, the public safety facilities project. Outside of that award, uh, there are, there, there, there were and are items that are not included in that GMP and contract. Um, partisan architecture at, at the start of the project outlined, um, a number of items that um, will ultimately need to be done by someone. Um, and it's essentially up to us, DAFD and, and, and FIRE to figure out who, who is taking responsibility for those items, um, and how we, how we want to come at addressing those items. And so from, from what I understand, when the other um, when the townships constructed their stations, um, essentially what they did was create an allowance that they granted to DAFD to purchase the, the pieces of cement and pieces of whatever are included in, in those soft costs um, up to a certain amount. Um, understanding that, you know, the chief and the, and, and the. the chief and the and and the fire department are the experts in in essentially what what they need to furnish and finish the the station out. So this is kind of, kind of been been sitting out there for a little bit, but I wanted to bring this to council to have a discussion on what items council feels comfortable counting as city responsible items for for the soft costs versus what we expect DAFD to to pick up and and take responsibility for. Kevin Pietrowski and David Gass with with Partners in Architecture are are here to help answer any questions in the list that that they provided for these items.
Justin, can I chime in here or you want me to hold for you guys to do your initial conversation?
So so sorry, David, you're you're a little quiet and can you repeat that?
Yes, is this an appropriate time for me to chime in or should I wait for you guys to have your initial conversation? Because there are a couple of things I wanted to point out on the list.
Go ahead, David. Thanks for joining.
You know, it's very nice to be joining you guys tonight. So on the list, just a couple of clarifications. We've confirmed that the wardrobe personnel lockers listed is in the GMP. And down a couple of items, the PPE dryer is in the GMP and that was done not by buying a piece of equipment, but by designing the HVAC system, exhaust system in a way that it did double duty and took care of drying as well. Down a few more, the air compressor that is also in the GMP. An item right below that, just to dissect it a little bit, the structured cabling and the drops to the points of contact are in the GMP also. That would leave the switches, the the obvious equipment, computers, et cetera, and the phone system as as a soft cost item. And then the very last item, just to clarify that, the radio coverage system may not be needed, but a test to determine if it's needed is required. So there may be a part B to that, if there's a test that shows that you need to do, include equipment that enhances reception for radio communication, then you'd have to do a system. But of the dozens of stations we've done, we've never had to include the system. We've always, by code, had to do the test. So I I wanted to clarify those few things before you guys started talking about it.
So now? Thank you. Hi, David. Is, um, is the test covered?
The test is not in the GMP. And that's about a $2,500 expense.
The test for the radio coverage.
So so Justin, what's the difference between the list you put in your memo? And then you provided another list that, why aren't we going off of that list? Why, why are we? David was commenting, I think, on your memo.
So you focus on the the one provided by Partners in Architecture, not 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 on my memo.
So everybody should be looking at page 128.
Correct, yeah, I I I I didn't include everything in my memo. I just picked out some specific pieces to to reference in and of.
Many of which are covered. That's what it sounds like. So so how much, how much of, how much equipment are we carrying over from the old building? I was under the impression that they moved certain things out and restoring things. Are we not storing things?
Ice machine?
I just don't know.
No, I thought they took the ice machine out and they're using it. Didn't I read that somewhere?
I could chime in there if you like, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, please.
The, there are some shop tools that are potentially being moved over. I am not certain about the ice machine. We have in the design process selected and and provided infrastructure for a selected ice machine, so that makes me think it's gonna be new, not used. There was, there was very little equipment appropriate to move over to the new station, except for shop tools.
Okay, so so let me go back to your memo, Justin. So so this is a discussion. Okay, so you said the remaining items total 166, 650. Correct. Are you sure of that, given that your list doesn't match the one on? I didn't go and re-add this up, so I mean.
So all all of the things that that I, so so I I I took David's list on page 128 and and I I added the red lines based on, you know, what set says, you know, in GMP zero. And like, I think we talked about in person that the, like, the the breathing air compressor was gonna be, was going to be a DAFD item. And so I I I cross out as much as I knew I could cross out on on David's list. And then I totaled up the the remainder.
Okay.
We we did a similar exercise and arrived at roughly the same number. Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, it was around 155,000. I don't, I don't know if Kevin's on, but considering a little escalation there since this list was generated.
Okay, so we've got approximately $160,000.
Fair number, I'd say.
Okay, so the question that I, question that I have then, Justin, are are have, are all of these the same types of things that Webster and Dexter Towns provided at their stations?
I I have not been able to get a clear list of what was provided by Dexter Township and Webster Township.
Because it would seem to me that that, I mean, if we're trying to be consistent, that's where we would start. I mean, obviously, if there's a need for something, we need to figure out how to make sure they have it, but. Right? Okay, who who can answer that question?
I've 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 asked the chief. I've.
Not been able to answer?
Not not, not that I have received. Okay.
All right, so now, thanks for waiting.
Thank you. So when we were at the, as part of the Public Safety Committee, Facilities Committee, multiple times, there were discussion that the furniture and things like gym equipment and stuff like that, those are all provided by the DAFD. So I'm actually very confused based from Ben to this, that these are the things that we are considering to.
Me too.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, thank you. I'm I'm happy that I'm not listening.
Wow.
That's good information, since I wasn't a part of that subcommittee. And those things are things that I marked off as, are we sure? I mean, those and some other things. I'm not sure, obviously, this is a discussion item, so we're not making a decision, but I don't think I'm able to make the decision without that information about what the other two townships were able to have the DAFD pay for. And I understand that it may be difficult to get that answer from all the people that you've asked. And at the same time, isn't that all a matter of public record? I mean, at some point, shouldn't their equivalent to you, Justin, be able to pull that documentation from their files to just, and it would, it it should be there, right?
In theory.
Well, and if it's not, that's a different problem, but I don't know how to move forward with this without that information.
All right, so I I think, Justin, you and I need to talk to the chief and maybe some of the other member townships. I'll help work on this.
I appreciate that.
Joe?
So part of the part of my regret in going through the fire station project was that when I came back in council, I didn't insist that we needed a new needs or wants, whatever you might call them, assessment based, including the other townships' stations. I think we probably with someone who is less invested in the process, had a assessment that indicated that we needed less than what we ended up with. I don't think I don't know how better to put it. You can't, you can't ask the fox that's watching the hen house about how to do this. I mean, just on the face of it, it says TV monitors, five, for $5,000. I don't know if anybody walked into Costco and walked in and seen 75 cent inch TVs that are $569. I mean, kitchen appliances are here for $12,000. I mean, what was at our station six months or a year ago that they used every day and worked fine, that we need to replace with deep freeze refrigerators in whatever kind of range it is that adds up to $12,000? That that's just and and the thing is, I didn't want to bring it up because we talked about a few thousand dollars, less than 10% of what the overall thing is. But it's indicative of this doesn't reflect reality. And the other part is, they've had refrigerators and stoves and gym equipment and ice makers at the DAFD for years. When have we ever paid for it? We never had, at least in my memory, where the DAFD has come to us and said, hey, we gotta replace the stove. We haven't seen that. Somebody's paying for that, and it wasn't us, but it was our station, so. Sorry.
Wow.
Joe, don't apologize. That's, that's good insight. And maybe that's a different way that you two could back into it. I mean, look back at, like he said, have we had to pay for an appliance? I mean, if we can't get the information out of the other townships as to what they had the DAFD pay for when they had their new stations, I mean, what haven't we paid for in the past? Why should we pay for it now? I mean, I think we can come up with that on our own. I mean, I I apologize, Justin. I I know that is not an easy task.
Well, well, I mean, but based on, based on the lease agreement in the interlocal, yeah, none of this would 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 have, would have fallen into that lease.
Okay, so it'll all be on DAFD.
I don't think we have enough information to make a decision tonight. But it sounds, it sounds like at least the estimates that are here total 150 to 160,000 dollars. Whether that's the real number or not, we'd have to validate that. And come back with a more real thing, right?
I believe in the interlocal agreement, the Dexter station is described as the main station. So that might allow a certain leeway. If they're all gonna come here to use exercise equipment, can it not be divided three ways? And any other activity as such that has depended on us being the training center?
All the stations have exercise equipment.
Oh, so being the main station doesn't.
They don't come here, though. Each station has their own exercise equipment.
So why, what would allow what's the purpose of us being the main station, other than we're originally here? I mean.
That's a deeper question, and this topic's gonna.
I'm just basing it on what I'm looking at at the interlocal.
The question you should be asking is, who bought the gym equipment for the other stations? That's the question that we need to find out.
They were.
We did, but we've rolled away from that. Yeah, no, it's okay.
And thank you. And also, my problem is that that was brought up a few times in the design committee and doing the design, and every time was like, nope, the DAFD takes care of the equipment, DAFD takes care of the furniture. So this coming back to us is really, to me, why now? If if there was a desire for us to contribute to that, why wasn't that brought up also at the design? All the design meetings and and things like that. Just my my two cents with it.
Justin, is is, and maybe, maybe Dave covered this and I I missed it, is the is the building alerting system? It's $110,000. Is that a soft cost?
So that that is, the the reason it's included as a soft cost is because DAFD has their their guy, their contractor, who they're they're anticipating and using to install.
Okay, but that's not included in the total. We're gonna come with a clean list, right? That doesn't, that's not part of 150.
It is.
It is, that is, and the and the furniture is.
It's not.
Dave, Dave, what did you say? It's not?
It is, is not in that number.
Yeah, I would think it's not in that number.
So they have a, they have a system that I'll say is recently purchased that's expendable, that they they have, knowing that the station was gonna be bigger than what they have now, so in part paid for already, but not completely. That's the way I understood it. I kind of thought that we last left off and it was a conversation with the chief and Justin, we were kind of briefed over these and it sounded like the the or the DAFD was gonna complete that. And that's why I figured it was wasn't on the list.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna get an updated list together and we'll come back. This, we we probably are premature in bringing this in front of council.
Can I add one more thing, Mr. Mayor, on the the reason soft costs are are were even brought up in the initial, you know, budgeting of the project is these items can fall into a category where the city has preferences on how they buy things from vendors that they've done business with over the years. Or is proprietary to a system that might be in several city facilities that makes sense to be the same? So the preference is one. The other is you can, in some cases, save tax dollars or not be taxed on some of these purchases. The other is there's no markup by the construction manager if purchase direct by the city is a soft cost. And and lastly, I guess if you're okay with the selection process or approval process to do these outside of the GMP, it's, you know, an added thing you have to think about. Otherwise, the more you throw into the GMP, the easier life is, right? Because you don't have to go through multiple approval processes. And I just thought I'd point that out to understand why, why is there a list of of soft costs at all? And it's, it's really for your benefit for the first three items I I mentioned.
Okay, we'll be reaching back out to you, Dave.
But anyway, we can help, certainly count on us.
Thank you.
Pick up these costs.
All right, I'm gonna move down to M7, discussion of public engagement regarding the August 5th proposed authorization to sell the MAF property, valid item. Justin, do you want to?
Yeah, so as councils were, at the April 14th meeting, council approved sending a resolution to Washtenaw County to get a valid item and to request authorization to sell the MAF property. But to follow up on that, the next question is, how do we want to do public engagement around this item? Or do do we want to do public engagement on this item? And what does that look like? We've used, you know, a couple of, you know, we've had, we've had a couple of items in the last few years where we've directly engaged with with residents. And the question is, you know, what 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 does that look like for for this item?
Do you have, I didn't look through every page of your newsletter. Do you have this item discussed in the newsletter?
It is, it's not discussed in the summer. But we we could do another newsletter for August.
Wow.
I'm just gonna say that we, at a baseline, I think we do need to have at least a one public engagement session. We did that when we put the other, when we put the, you know, the money ask on the ballot, and, you know, people appreciated that and attended that and. Money ask on the ballot, um and you know, people appreciated that and attended that and. Also, with the idea that we maybe could put out another newsletter. I'm just wondering. About costs. With that versus what we did with the other item, which is put, you know, a. One pager out to the mail and to everybody um. Because I think one or the other would be helpful. I just wanna make sure we're mindful of which one. Is more cost effective, assuming they're both as. Informationally effective.
So I mean, i i i like if we were to mail this, if we were to mail out a one pager by itself. Um we're probably looking at. Three to five uh two, two and a half to three and a half thousand. Two, two point five, two, two, twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred. If we if we make it in into a, do another newsletter, it's. I don't wanna say it's free, but it's, I mean, it's. One one page and an eight page newsletter, we can find a room for that.
All right, free-ish.
And there's not room in the current newsletter?
The current newsletter already went out. Or it already went to the printer. It should be uh hitting homes next week. The the issue is we needed to get the um. Uh the water quality report out. Um and so we we needed to get that done now.
What are people hearing? Anybody asking about the ballot question? Is there confusion? How about the Dexter forum? Those of you that have text forum, has that been a topic at the forum?
Last topic was about. Retirement of superintendent school.
Well, I mean, you've basically got one page written here in your memorandum. So.
Take that and just see it up.
That would be my suggestion. I don't know how complicated this needs to be. I mean, we're not allowed to promote it or. Or officially, you know, provide an opinion on it, right? We just need to make people aware that there's a ballot question. And 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 fairly do that, right? Which is why I would have put it in the other newsletter.
I mean, we can, we can, we can do a, do a fall newsletter before August, let people know that the fall is coming.
If it will be, if it will be in next newsletter, what what's the timing? And you have to give enough time for people to run forward the discussion.
Also, so we should actually be getting. Ballots. Probably two to three weeks.
Right, but nine weeks away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so when do those absentees go out?
So the absentee ballots ha- ha- have to be to residents. Well, they they have to be to uh the military overseas forty-five days prior to the election. And they have to be out, be available to residents at least forty days prior to the election.
Yeah, pretty quick.
Right.
Go.
I like the idea of the one pager going out uh. If we did in the next newsletter or whatever um. You know, on the website, if you go on the newsletter or the emails that go up um. But. I mean, I think the important thing is. Everybody can look at the ballot language, right? And know, oh, that's what this is about. You know, some people might say, where is that? Or something like that. But I mean, I think from a clarification standpoint, I will. I would probably be asking, what are you gonna, what are you gonna use the money for? And I mean, obviously, we're reversing for the costs of the her fire station. And I mean, it's gonna go, if it comes in later, it's gonna go back into general funds and essentially reimburse those costs and stuff. Essentially, that's what it's doing, the offsetting the cost of the fire station and.
Is that a fact that we can print? If we make a.
Are you telling them what you're doing? That they have just done a ballot.
What if we?
I'm asking you.
Um I I mean, I think if council made a motion to that effect. Saying that, you know, should should the property be sold and. The funds will be put back into the general fund.
Um that that's the key, that's the key intent of. What's happening, right? And that's what people wanna know, right? Maybe it's not important. No, I think it is. Totally agree with you, I mean. But I also think that the fact that we picked the August election, it's important to make sure people know that it's not a ballot. I mean, I don't, you know, now that there's a sign out there, there's no. You know. The May stuff that's occurred, the schools that advertised all over place, the digital message boards and everything, they have stuff going on.
Thank you. Um I I think it would actually be good to, you know, saying that it's going back to the general fund, but also that. Helping us with the projects that are coming up, you know, cost of offsetting cost of fire station is one of them, but also thinking about. Different things that could potentially come and the projects we are working on. Any of the parks that mean any revisiting or any of those things can be part of this, not necessarily. Just the fire station that might happen. Because in reality, it's going back to our general funds.
No, unless we assign it. You're right. All right, well, I think I think we need to if. By next meeting, we're gonna decide what we're gonna do. And so especially, I think a one pager is the direction I would prefer to go.
How much would one of them cost?
Three grand.
Three grand.
Unless we can, unless we can stop the printer. Let's restart the printer and add it to the current newsletter.
Did Josh, did we get the proof from the kind of print?
Oh, way to go, Josh.
Screwed all up, buddy. Thanks a lot.
Efficiency.
I'm over here working my ass off.
Let's see what we can come up with as a draft one pager for the next meeting.
I think you write a trifold.
J- j- Josh, let's reach out to Ted tomorrow and see if it's, if they've already been printed or not.
Yeah, as long as something gets out there before the election and.
I know, that's the, that's important.
A lot of people's gone in August, man. But we have such a huge absentee ballot. And you got a three week window before they. Start kicking them in. Not to mention your notification process or whatever you have to do there.
Okay, we'll move down to our last business item, a discussion of proposals from O H M advisors for design of eighty fifty Main Street.
Sure, um so um. City council included as as one of the tools to um move forward with doing something with eighty fifty Main. Focusing on uh public restrooms in that location. Um staff reached out to O H M to see if they uh had an in-house um architecture. Um firm or an architecture wing. And they do, and so staff met on site with um. I believe it's Chris um from O H M. And uh he 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 works as part of their their architecture wing. Uh we walked the building, um I mean, you know, I don't wanna say, you know. Show them all there is to to see, but you know, there there isn't a whole lot to see on the inside. Um so uh O H M went back and drafted a proposal of what it would take to. Um get through schematic design or or um get get through um. Essentially. Interior design, um what the interior might look like with adding to restrooms and. Uh potential open space and um. Taking that through uh the creation of bid documents. Um I wanted to bring this to council. Um council has talked about. Asking the D D A to fund this project. I believe the D D A has talked about funding this project. Um my thought is if council is comfortable, um we'll present this to D D D A. And ask D D A to essentially a- a- approve the scope or approve um their contribution to the scope. Um and get O H M going on it. Um and alternatively, if if council wanted to see more more proposals or quotes. Um happy to get those as well. But one, two, take counsel feedback on. On what what you see.
Thoughts on the draft proposal?
We're gonna be ADA compliant.
The 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 intent will be will be to bring it up to ADA compliance.
It's gonna be really tough, man.
And my 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 Marcus is here.
I'm here again, but not an expert in this area, so. It's just mentioned that Chris Ozag is a senior product manager at our director studio is online. Um so. He wrote a proposal, he's at the walkthrough. Uh he's the expert, so if you have any technical questions, please, if you wanted to.
I think I think the most important thing here is we were, we we pledged to show the proposal to D. To the D D A since we're asking them to potentially pay for it. So the reason you're seeing it is you're seeing it first, you know. We'll be sharing with them. But if there's anything that's left out of what we want the architect to do. Before D D A sees the proposal that we're asking them to contribute to, now would be the time to. Provide those comments, so this could be refined before it gets put in the D D A packet. Which is not until June nineteenth, so technically we have. A little bit of time, but then again, O H M and Chris need time to modify if we have something major that needs to be modified. It looks, it looks good to me, I I um. There's, there's uh. Part of me that feels like if we could. Start with a schematic design and get to something and get concurrence on what the idea is. Because I've heard a lot of things kicked around the whole, every time somebody brings back, mentions bathrooms and somebody mentions. The whatever the front open space is, welcome and welcome and center, then somebody in the audience might mention, you know, public enter, private enterprise. You know, I I really think. We need a good schematic design phase to get everybody agreeing. With how much space is there and what we wanna can wanna can really do with that. If if this were me, I would be approving only task one right now, I think. Guessing two, three and four is. Early. And I think the sixteen thousand will be. Well spent to align our priorities. That's what I would say. So if you, if you, if you guys are okay with that, you know, D D A, D D A gets a little bit edgy. Okay, because they wonder if they're doing it or we're doing it, and it's really, we're all trying to do it, but. You know, it's their dollar and I I. It was important to me that you see the proposal first, but I'm gonna push for the schematic design. And then. Align us all on what we're, what we're actually talking about. Does that make sense to everybody? Michelle? I can't remember what that number is, but I know it's more than sixteen. But rather than have them take the full step of seventy fives. I think we, you know. It it do the first step and. Then a few, few months down the road, and I I I hope that O H M would be acceptable.
If you look at task two, it's actually bolded and. Second page of the poll that we didn't intend to move into task two, which is construction documents until we have written approval.
For sure.
So if that written approval just means coming back another meeting to get it.
Yeah.
You know, authorization of the main task, that's fine.
Okay. That's kind of.
If I can make one, this is Chris Ozag I doing.
Hi, Chris.
I'll put my video on so you can see me, but sorry, probably extra large, but um, yeah, I um. I I agree if you can approve the schematic design, I'd also. Ask to approve the testing, then at least we know what's there as far as. The paint and any other materials um that we may have to deal with, but. We all know, you know, when you're talking concept, you may have an idea, but once you get it on paper, you may be like, what if we do this? What if we do that? Right, so um. You know, I I think just approving that initial concept package that gets you a cost to do the work and. You know, can confirm exactly what the scope is, definitely a good thing. Because otherwise, you know, we made some assumptions in in the construction document phase, but. You know, if direction changes when we do it, then, you know, we gotta address it later, so. Um I I I think if you can do the schematic design and the testing, which I think that's nineteen thousand total.
That makes sense.
That'd be my recommendation.
Yep, makes sense. Good, good comment. All right, well, I'll I'll seek to get D D A concurrents at the. June nineteenth meeting, I think it is.
Can you explain to me what is all encompassing in a schematic? Will you look at? What's there for sewer and water right now? Or we just be looking at the building?
Yeah, so so I I mean, I think our our thought is that, I mean, the the building has has sewer and water.
I know, but how old is it?
That's, that's fair, that's a fair question.
Is it still cast iron?
Fair, fair question.
Is it twenty feet under that parking lot?
I know, I I I know Tim and Eric had mentioned that that they would like to try and get a um sewer uh sewer manhole.
There's a manhole that's there.
Well, you can make it pretty as you want, but if I can't flush your toilet, it really don't do me no good.
But the water's.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's what's coming in.
That's where your money's gonna be.
But but also the the building has has no heating or cooling. At all. Yep, so so I think that 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 would be, that would be a part of this. Um and then, and then uh, you know, um. The 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 electrical, I mean, there's, there's wires running all over the ceiling.
No doubt, I mean, the water, the sewage, everything. But at the same time, I don't wanna lose the original intent, which is the oldest building in town.
Yeah, so what was the library just closed in the winter?
It might have had a little stove.
I think at one time that's all.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
They, it's something the sheriff was in there, I know.
I I mean, we're, we're, we're using space heaters right now during the, during the winter.
Lot of hot air. All right, we're over. Thank you, thank you. All right, we'll move down to nonarranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak then they're not arranged? Thank you all for attending. Seeing none, we'll move down to council comments. Pablo, would you lead us today? Okay, wow.
Briefly, uh for the next time we meet, we will be in the month of June, which is Pride Month. Um so I hope everyone at this table would like to celebrate that with me. If not, feel free to talk to me about our differences. And if you find anyone out there in the community who has question, who have questions, direct them to me.
And if you find anyone out there in the community who has, who have questions, direct them to me.
Very well said.
The newsletter that we're putting out, there was a page in there on Washington County cleanup page. So actually emailed, um, our county commissioner and the county commissioner for the southwest part of the county. I noted that all of the locations that they had on there were. The middle of the county to the east, there's one in Northfield, they're down in Augusta and Lipton, they're all on the east side of the. So I asked them, why was it there are no locations in the western part of the county for that? So hopefully we'll get a response back. When we last, when we talked to Siobhan Township about doing fire services, we had the DFD with all that. We had a consultant from MSU, I can't remember his name, Sean will probably know the name. Mr. Harvey, there you go, but he, we had a. A document that he prepared and gave to the group that we paid for. That was. Very. A very in-depth. Discussion and explanation of funding models. We should have that somewhere and. I think it'd be an excellent document to have for when, when we start those discussions.
Thank you, um, whoever ordered the fabulous weather we had yesterday for Memorial Day, thank you. Um, it was a lovely parade, um, thanks to the Rotary Club, they did an amazing job, and I think this was the biggest parade they had with. Um, about twelve hundred people, wow, right? Um, it was fantastic.
Uh, last opportunity to put items on the agenda under, under section P. Seeing none, I will seek a motion for adjournment at eight twenty-two, no, nine thirty. Moved by Hubbard. Second, second by Aldag, all in favor, signal by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Have a good evening, get home safely, everybody.